Okay, does anybody remember, did we, did we do 1.7.1 or do we start at 1.7?
I think that's where we stopped.
I think it is, yeah.
Okay. So. I guess start.
Yeah, we, y'all, I think the last thing we talked about was someone had asked about that particular policy and that's, so that's one if, like, if a mobile home park's getting redeveloped, making sure that there's adequate real housing for relocation needs prior to, prior to displacement.
Is this in the, in the event of a stor-, you know, hurricane?
No, no, this is if, 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 yeah, if, if parcel, if something's being redeveloped, so, like, mobile home parks are a good example because they're, a lot of them are under single ownership by entity or corporation. If they're going to get redeveloped, the policies intended, and there's state statute to this effect as well, that before they're allowed to demolish and dis-, you know, and displace people, they, there has to be a certain amount of relocation assistance and availability, so that policy speaks to that. So the, both the state and the county have policies that's, or have regulations that speak to that as well.
Okay. Thanks.
A plan, a plan.
Yeah, yeah, a plan for how you're going to, you know, deal with relocation.
Well, I mean. I, 1.82, I have a problem with recognize and protect existing mobile home and manufactured homes from non-affordable housing redevelopment. I, it should be, I would prefer it be protected from, which one, one from all?
1.8.2.
Point two.
Green highlight.
Oh, I can't, I must be, like, close to blue-green colorblind. So the one that says recognize and protect existing mobile home and manufactured homes from non-affordable housing developments?
It's pretty clear they're saying, as soon as those mobile homes have anything, are destroyed, we're gonna move them, put affordable housing there, and we'll try to make places where we deem that they fit now. So, new policy providing protection measures of existing, well, that's only protecting them from one development, why can't we protect them from all development?
Well, that's a good point. I mean, that, tip, I think typically what happens is we, we see them getting redeveloped as new residential, but no, I think that, I think that's a, because now with the live local, I mean, every property is. Well, uh, well, not every property, so just for clarification, so the Live Local Act only applies to property that has zoning of commercial, industrial, or mixed use, so if it's a residential office or something like that. All the other property is, does not fall under the Live Local Act. So if something is zoned straight residential now, they don't get any special dispensation but under Live Local, they still have to go through all of our processes and everything.
But they're still, you know, susceptible to affordable housing regardless whether through Live Local or not.
Right, I think, so what, I mean, what this was basically trying to get to is if, you know.
I mean, just.
If, if something's going to be, if it is going to be redeveloped, it should only be redeveloped as affordable housing, not any, that, that's what this is trying to achieve. If, so if you're not gonna develop it as, redevelop it as a new mo- mobile home park, then it needs to qualify as an affordable housing development is, is what the intent of that policy is.
I think they should just be protected from development.
Just protected from redevelopment, okay.
I mean, if anybody else, I just, you know, maybe has something, I just feel like that's the, the goal in all of this is, I mean, it's clear from the very beginning, it was all support, you know, not just private developers, but in the very beginning, the Housing Authority and, you know, everything is targeted for them, but I mean, the real affordable housing is mobile homes and it's.
Oh, there's no doubt, it is a natural, yeah, it, it, it does provide a significant amount of affordable housing that's not recognized in a line item somewhere as, as affordable housing.
Because those people are not gonna be able to afford the new affordable housing development costs. I mean, I'm not even, I'm not saying anything bad, I can't afford them either.
Okay, so we, we can rework that a little bit to be a broader policy if that's support, yeah, everyone's shaking their head, okay.
Yeah, manufactured, mobile, anything.
I think I heard all housing.
Just housing development, yeah.
Housing development.
I mean, because once they're gone, it's already clear that all of this, they're, they won't be able to rebuild there, they're gonna be, so.
So, so are you saying you would prefer that it basically, what we're really trying to do is, we wanna protect it from.
Housing, all housing developments.
From any redevelopment.
Well, or housing, or I guess, I, I mean, I was thinking housing because it's a housing element, but I guess any redevelopment, I don't, it couldn't be used for any other purpose though, right?
Well, so we have some, we actually have, we have a, one big mobile home park that's zoned highway business, which, on.
Keep development then, because.
So, I mean, that, that's a, and that would be under the Live Local Act unfortunately. So, all right, let, let, I, I think I see where you're going, so, okay.
Seems a policy of protection. Okay.
That's a, a simple sentence on the very first one on the following page from the cur- current language, does it say the same thing?
Um, it's a, it's a different focus, it's, it's more, in my opinion, it's more, it's a broader policy statement of housing should be context, should be sensitive to what's around it. You don't wanna come in, in a single-family neighborhood and drop in, you know, a large, you know.
Is there a simpler way of saying that though, versus context-sensitive?
See, I thought context-sensitive was pretty.
Very technical.
Was, was.
I don't get it.
I, I was, I, I thought that was a fairly common term, but I guess it's not, so we'll.
It's in your, in your world as profession, yeah.
Well, I don't have any context to, like.
So compat-, so compatibility, huh?
Define context-sensitive infill, because that is a very common.
There's no notes.
Where do you define it?
In, within the conference of plan definitions section.
Okay, okay.
So, so.
So, maybe that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay. It's really, you know, you're just trying to get at scale and massing and things that, you know, you know, you can.
With the character.
Yeah.
Well, if it means compatible, why can't we say compatible?
I think compatible gets.
It seems like that word is being eliminated from all.
It could be debated, what is compatible?
Well, that's, that's, that's the reason. It's harder to debate context because you don't get it.
I think, I think context-sensitive gets more to physical design and character, whereas compatibility also gets into just the use itself.
Do we, do you have access to that definition that we can see?
Because there's no notes on this change either.
Context-sensitive infill housing, is there, do we have a definition for that?
What number are you guys looking at?
The following page. There is no number to it.
There's no note for that.
Yeah, the number's on the previous page.
It's, yeah.
So the num-, yeah, the number was it.
Oh, okay.
Starts over here.
1.1.
Okay.
That's not, that's not.
Is that the definition?
That's a note, it just doesn't change anything.
I'll include the language.
We're, we're talking about.
Do we have an older one? This isn't the right one? This one I've been using?
Sure.
Is it the package you had last Monday?
Maybe, let me see. Yes. See if I have something else in here. Not in here.
Let's put it this way.
Otherwise.
The term context-sensitive infill housing, for me, became complex.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's on the back of here.
We're, yeah, we're talking about right here.
Later, later day.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
What's the number?
We haven't figured out what it means yet.
181? Being used again.
Yeah, that's it.
Um. Well, and that's what I was trying to get at, is that it, it's, you know, it's looking at what are the, what is the?
Surroundings, the context.
Yeah, what are, yeah, what are their surroundings, but I, I, I think it's more specific again to, like, physical size and character versus actual use itself, because resident, you know.
But isn't that the objective though? I mean, we don't, you're saying that the objective should be that they look the same and not that it's not in an area that doesn't have the same usage? I thought that was the point.
What, I think what we're trying to say is that it could be appropriate to put affordable housing in areas where there isn't currently affor-, that's residential in area, residential areas, that as long as you look at the, the scale and the physical characteristics and you're not overwhelming the area, so.
With what?
With, with, uh, parking, on, like, things, things that would, would impact the surrounding area, so you're, you're not building something out of context with, if you're in a single, predominantly single-family neighborhood, so it might be appropriate to have maybe a duplex or a triplex in an area, but not, not a, you know, not an eightplex type of thing. So, we're trying to look at, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna say, I, I thought of maybe an example that we had recently that went to Planning and Zoning Board of, it was the Susanna projects. That was a project where we used the term content-sensitive when we brought it to you guys. Basically what that meant is they were doing a multifamily development in an area that was primarily residential, but had some multifamily, but what they did is place the parking lot behind the building, push the buildings closer to the street to be more in context with the history and the development pattern. This was a smaller-scale development that achieved getting some more housing, but that wasn't going to be detrimental to the neighborhood. So it's kind of an example of a project you guys saw.
We'll, we'll flag this and we'll bring back a definition and.
One of the things that makes me uncomfortable is, because I reviewed those code hacks, is one of the things was to eliminate the word compatibility from these comprehensive use plans, and I don't like that elimination, it's very.
So.
It's very pointed, because then people don't, we still, I don't have a clear understanding of that, and it can be used, it's not, it, it can't be, people can't use that word to argue against something.
So, and, and I think, I think the, the genesis of that is you have instances, and it happens quite frequently, they're, they're NIMBY-isms, they're not in my backyard, you know, sentiments, of, for affordable housing projects, if, if it wasn't an affordable housing project, it was just a multifamily project, you don't get the same pushback in some instances as you do from surrounding areas just because it's affordable. And, you know, we don't want, oh, I'm just using a derogatory term, we don't want those people, you know, so that's where, so, I think that's where the genesis of, you know, the compatibility issue arises, in that you can't look at the two different, you know, just because something is affordable housing doesn't necessarily mean, you know, it doesn't mean that it's incompatible, you know, with the surrounding area. And that's, that's the context that a lot of us have had to, had to, had to work in, so.
Well, but it doesn't change that the people might not want it there, regardless of, you changed the definition, they still, you're not gonna change people saying, not in my neighborhood, just because you changed the word.
No, you're, you're right.
And so you're just making it more difficult for them to have a leg to stand on, so that they can't say, I don't want this here anymore, but they should still have, be able to say that.
I think if you. Read that definition.
Yeah.
If you read, I looked it up, but just read that, it kinda makes sense once you read it.
No, I, I know what it, I know what it means.
Definition definitely needs to be.
I know what it means.
I mean, the, I mean, the, the statement in general that's, that's proposed to replace is, is simple and clear, and it relates to everything, not just low-income infill housing, so, I mean, it, it kinda, it's, it's shorter and simpler, but it's broader than the previous statement.
So you like the original one?
I'd like the, I like the new one personally.
I think the new one is.
New one with the definition.
Yeah.
Just so.
Okay.
Because I read something here that makes it very simple, I understand what it just said.
Right.
When I read the definition of it.
Yes, I just don't like the intent to say that.
Where does your definition come from?
That people can't say not in my neighborhood. They can still say that.
Infill residential context-sensitive.
Regardless.
By Imagine Lexington, but it kinda explains it in a very simplified way, in fact, I saw it, it is wholly possible to add residential units while matching the consistent rhythm of existing development so that the new seamless blends in with the old.
That, I think that's from, that's, yeah.
It's from a complaint.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oxford has considered together with the surrounding, you know, circumstances or area, so in context with, fits it, you know, very well.
It just depends on who defines what the context is.
Kind of a sneaky way of saying that, that, that if you, if you have affordable housing, it can't look like affordable housing.
And who decides that though?
Yeah.
Some plan's come before you. Or before you bore.
We are the deciders.
Unless it's under Live Local, then it's.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I don't really get a decision.
What was the alternative term for affordable?
Attainable.
Attainable.
Attainable, yeah.
Attainable, uh, obtainable.
Yeah.
Attainable.
Attainable.
A T T.
Okay.
Okay. Moving along.
So where are we?
The next one, 1.8.1.
Or 1.1.1?
Yeah, to another one, 1.1.1.
Well, I mean, that's entirely changing, it's not clarified, it's, it's saying continue to support to increasing it, like, that's saying you're gonna support something and then just saying we're gonna increase density is not clarified language, it's completely different language.
I think, um, I think provide for density bonus, that's what we do now, you know, provide for density bonuses for affordable and context-sensitive infill housing to incentivize. I mean, that's this, that's our common, that's what we do now. We have an affordable housing bonus density process, do conditional use built into our land development code, it's been there for many, many years.
But the word increase.
I, I think, I think.
Is saying, we're gonna do it.
Increase, yeah, it's, it's, and, or I would just say get rid of it, I would just start the sentence with provide for density bonuses.
Or it, or it, I mean, I'd be more comfortable with it if it said something like, consider options including increasing density allowances and, and density bonuses.
Okay.
That way, we're thinking about it, but we're not saying we have to do it.
Right, okay.
Did it start at six?
Yeah, the workshops are six.
Excuse my language.
We're done.
That's, that's on record, you know. Pardon my interruption.
You didn't.
Excuse me.
We'll take a second while you get settled.
Yeah, we're in, in the housing element at one, at policy 1.1.1, or it was 1.8.1 in the past, depending on where you're looking at. Until I'm not, but I think I am.
1.8.2 is removed because it has the word compatible. Will the word compatible be anywhere in the, in the revised language, or is it completely gone?
I don't know, but, I mean, I probably.
I'll bet you that it's not, not in there at all.
I bet we can find a place for it though.
There's a compatible place.
I, I honestly don't know if it is or not. I, I honestly don't know if it is or not.
I'm pretty sure this doesn't exist in here.
I'm gonna be looking for it now.
It's redundant with the other places that don't say compatible.
So, the one point, the old one point eight point three.
That's where I'm at now.
Yeah.
There's a housekeeping error there. The, down, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven dots down, they used principal instead of principal.
Allowing more than one principal building.
Very low.
On the lot.
That's also in there.
Oh, this principal, this principal, the spelling of principal.
The wrong, wrong principle.
Wrong principle.
Good catch. Oh, Renee, the very low.
What about, I'm sorry?
That's added in there.
Very low, yes.
Very low income housing, that's, I mean, that's low and very low.
That's, that's below thirty percent area median income or lower. But, I mean, we, you know, the, the, most of this is already in the land development code, small lot sizes. No minimum house sizes is, that is something that we should have gotten rid of a long time ago, cause I don't think it's actually legal. We, but we do have some zoning districts where we have minimum house sizes in there, um, which I don't think is legal, I'll defer.
I don't recall where it's gonna have minimum.
Yeah.
Minimum house size.
I, I think, as I said, I think it's something that's a holdover from a long time ago that probably needs to come out of our land development code. Zero lot line is allowed, um, under our affordable housing, uh, section. Allowing manufactured housing to locate, well, that's all existing language, cluster development.
Reduce parking minimums, I mean, that's, we have a parking problem here, can we keep that out, or we don't have a choice?
Um, reduce, well, in the context of affordable housing, actually, parking minimums are a lot lower than they are for a regular market rate, um, apartment buildings. Good example is, uh, Santos Isles at the corner of, uh, Safford and MLK. And they, they got the benefit of a reduced parking, uh, I think it was only one per unit, and it's still, the parking lot is never really more than about three, fours full, so, they're just, they're smaller, generally, they're smaller homes, they don't have the means to have three or four vehicles, so, I mean, that's just, that one I, we just repeatedly see findings that support that.
Can you define what's the difference between low income and then very low, that's the first time I've seen that in here?
So, very low income is, uh, hold on, that's gonna be lesser equal to thirty percent of area median income. I mean, that, that is like, that's public housing practically, I mean, that's the only way that you get units for that. Low income is gonna be fifty to eighty percent of area median income, and then once you get above eighty, you kind of start falling into the low mod and moderate income, and then workforce goes all the way up to a hundred and forty percent of area median income.
Well, if you're looking for a place for compatible, that might be, because, I mean, there will be people that might have something to say about, you know, being next to public, like, super public housing, being compatible.
There is, though.
I mean, I don't know if you can, I don't know if you can put it in there.
You keep in mind, like, they actually, under the housing element, that is one of the, that is one of the categories, it's, it's, uh, low income, and I'm reading directly from, uh, one six, one sixty-three point three one seven seven. It's low income, very low income, moderate income, these are actual terms that.
Well, we didn't have it in the other one, that's why I was just checking, yeah. Wasn't in the original policy.
What if it, it, before we go to the bullet points right at the end of the statement, we added including consideration of options including. So that we're considering these, we're not saying we're absolutely gonna do these in every instance.
Good idea.
Okay. I don't think, see anything wrong with that.
Cause, cause, I mean, some of them are appropriate in, in
Right.
in different situations, and some of them wouldn't be.
Right. This actually might be where we want to weave in the, the context sensitive again, or, you know, so.
And for a note, too, um, as the attorney pointed out, the very low income is statute, is on statute? So that would be good to put in the notes more than the survey responses, because that clarifies why it's really there, not, just, cause I don't think anyone in the survey actually asked for it.
The language, it says allowing more than one principal building on one lot. And it says, i.e. cottage courts. I guess I'm not quite sure.
So, right now, you, you can't have, if you have a, a platted lot, you, and it's zoned for a single family, even though it might be a one-acre lot, you can have one single-family house. If you wanted to do something more than that, and let's say that there's density, that, you'd have to go through a subdivision process and, you know, because there's no way to allow more than one, one principal building on a lot, so there's instances where we've had interest to, you know, maybe put like, just a small cul-de-sac in and have, whether it's called cottage court, so you, you own the unit, but you don't own the land underneath. You can, you can get there under certain zoning districts by way of, if you do a condo plat, um, but there's just, it's just difficult under our, under our codes right now, um, and it, it's a, they're usually very small, they're usually not, uh, you know, big developments, you'll see them, you know, like I said, it might be a little cul-de-sac with five or six homes on it, you know, and they're, but it's on, in this instance, they wouldn't have to be platted and subdivided into individual lots, you'd be able to build, have more than one home, and the rest would be under common ma- you know, common ownership. So, it, it's just a, it's just a development type that is hard for us to get to under our land development code. We're not going through a ton of machinations.
That's a slightly older version, but it's.
Um, let's see. Sounds like everyone's turning the page.
Well, actually, I was looking at the housing, uh, continue to appoint members of the Tarpon Housing Authority.
We, we just do that, it doesn't really need to be in the, the board, it's, it's vested to the Board of Commissioners anyway, so, it's not, it's not something that really even needs to be stated.
A hypothetical question. Where in the policies, would there be any policy as relates to organizations like Habitat for Humanity, the, the, you know, that, uh, Homes for, uh, is there something, or does it fall under any of these, cause I see how we identify Pinellas County Housing Trust. We, we list them, but do we have anything that takes others under consideration?
I don't think we specifically call out, I don't think we specifically call out Habitat, but do we?
Other, like, nonprofit organizations.
Where's that at?
Um, on page one, it's the, the second one down, objective, uh, old objective one point one.
Yeah, nonprofit organizations.
Just as long as we have something that allows for the.
Yeah, we tried to cover the full spectrum.
Yeah.
Okay.
Personally, that was divided in two different objectives and very specific to the, um, Housing Authority and whatnot, so we expanded it.
Where is it?
Um, on page one, it's gonna be your second policy now, it's objective one point two, highlighted in yellow. It says, um, assist the Housing Authority nonprofit organizations in the private sector.
Yeah, good, 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 that's good, so at least we have something that encourages that as well, or allows it to be considered.
Oh, there it is on the next page. Workforce housing.
One point three point one, that's where I'm at. We start off with the word define. Is that appropriate? Oh, so they shall define.
Where are you?
The next page, one point three point one.
Yeah, but we're on one, okay, one point ten four.
Yeah. Just kind of.
Yeah, we're just trying to set the parameters for, okay.
I'm, I'm kinda, can I ask a question, I'm kind of jumping down to one point, one point three. I was wondering about this, I was kind of following it on the news lately, and people who are building, is this what's called an accessory, or a, a unit or a small home?
Mother-in-law suite, is that in-law, right.
So, that's allowed?
That's all, yeah, in, in all of our single-family residential districts now, we allow accessory dwelling units by right, with parameters around them, they can't exceed a certain square footage, they have to have common utilities, um, it's, you know, the, the residences, the primary residence has to, it's gotta be owner occupied, that's a little bit difficult to, in a long haul, to really enforce, but we do have that already in our affordable housing section of the Land Development Code.
It's more gender neutral.
Well, what was it, we got the whole education on the, what's the, the Greek term for?
Kamaraki.
The kamaraki? Yeah.
Say that again?
Kamaraki.
Kamaraki?
Kamaraki?
What's that name?
Oh, kamaraki.
Yeah.
Kamaraki, there, now, yeah, yeah, little room.
Little, yeah, is that one, okay.
That's the slang term for little room.
Okay. But apparently that's where they ship off the old men to stay, I don't know.
Where my dad grew up.
I'm okay with page five. Makes me wanna ask a question.
So for one point eight, that's including affordable housing that should also meet minimum construction code, right?
Absolutely, yeah, everything has to meet, everything has to meet it.
Housing is everything. We got a lot of complete strikeouts.
So can you kind of summarize why the rest are just, so we don't, is that all just flood related?
Uh, some of it's just really not discretionary, the other ones are referring to historic structure, you know, it's, homes and stuff, so that's been moved to the historic element.
What, what is a demolition program technique?
Where are you at, so, okay, established principles to guide conservation related, and demolition program techniques, I have no idea what that was supposed to, it was vaguely reworded from the current language.
I don't either. Yeah, they, they picked it up from the original.
And demolition program techniques.
Sometimes like control, erosion control, minimizing the impact on the surrounding properties, those are all things that come to mind with demo notifications.
The policy there, there's, the policy before it, um, talks about the demolition program of the police department, so.
Police department?
Our police department has demo, probably unsafe structures.
So, at least from my experience, I don't know how, it may be different in Tarpon, cause I haven't done this in Tarpon, usually when it is a police demolition program, it's usually because it's a, um, unfit structure, an unsafe structure, and, then again, I haven't, this is, this is at least my experience, so unsafe structure at that point, it gets demoed.
Better gone than present.
Based on the other policy, that's kind of what I gathered. Techniques to do that right.
Like in Venice, we do it through, we do it through a judicial action, and then, um, we convince, so.
I'm kind of, I'm like, I'm not sure that this policy is doing a whole lot for us. I'm just gonna circle that one and examine a little closer, I don't, not sure I'm convinced that that's a a policy that's achieving anything at this point.
I think the policy before it kind of covers it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it could probably be more useful or, or be gone, either one.
And then I would just, I would call attention to the two point two point one. We just pretty majorly overhauled that section of the Land Development Code, so, and that all did get approved by the Board of Commissioners, so that is effective now. So that's been addressed pretty extensively. Mr. Bessie, is there anything you wanted to go back to on the housing element, since you weren't here at the last meeting where we talked through this?
I wish my memory was strong enough to say that I had something.
Just thought I would give you, if you think of anything, we can always pick it up at another time.
You can use your memory to default.
There is one item that may be relevant or not. Recently, I had a, uh, I'm in construction, um, a project that was related to pervious and impervious ratios. And, uh, I visited the Building Department thinking that in my particular neighborhood, I was on a fact-binding mission, that there was a, uh, set pervious versus impervious ratio, and much to my surprise, there is none. And it appears that the entire city of Tarpon Springs does not have a ratio. Now, if anyone doesn't understand what that is, it's pretty straightforward. The idea is if you have a residential lot, we'll leave commercial law for this moment, is that you're only allowed to cover so much of it with impervious surfaces.
Like concrete.
Correct. The concept there is, we flood, it rains all the time, and the more that is impervious, it runs somewhere else. And, in my experience, I don't think I've ever encountered a municipality that does not have impervious, impervious ratio. Having done a worksheet, I just saw it today on another permit for Safety Harbor, it's very serious business, and they take it very seriously. So, I don't know if that's relevant at that moment, since you asked, I thought it struck me as very strange that we don't have that, and perhaps it's a good topic, and this would, might be a good place to bring this up, for both residential and commercial, go ahead.
So after we spoke, cause, um, we talked a little bit about this, I went back and I talked to Renee, too, and we do have, so right now, ISR, impervious surface ratio does not apply to the single-family residential projects. But we do, I believe, have an, already in our land use categories, an ISR, and the reason why is because they allow for some non-residential uses, so that's when it would apply, so I think that we can maybe go back to the future land use element and see how we can potentially apply it, we probably have to take a look and see what other municipalities do for comparison, or the utilities element, too, yeah.
What, what is an ISR?
Impervious surface ratio.
Oh, silly that.
So that's your percentage.
But, no, I, I think that's, um, something that we definitely want to revisit, um, on the future land use element, and establish, whether it's in the housing, it needs to be in the future land use element, cause that's where the rubber hits the road, so for all of our residential land use categories, I think we, and we'll look and see what Pinellas County is using, um, but.
Point six five, point three five.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So, uh, yeah, I, otherwise, I mean, you know, I'm seeing it all over the place, especially as as water rates continue to go up, and it costs a lot of money to try to keep landscaping alive, you know, it seems like the default is, well, I'll just rip up all this landscaping and I'll just put pavers everywhere, and so I'm seeing that happen a lot. And so, and while that might solve your water bill issue, now you're creating another problem by an increased runoff and affecting your neighbors and things like that, so, so I think it does need to be. So I think it does need to be addressed.
I just wanted to put one point of clarity, that there's two different terms. So there's the ISR, impervious surface ratio, and there's also lot coverage. So typically lot coverage only applies to like structures. So in the smart code that we have, lot coverage means the structures or the buildings on the property. Your ISR is really everything that's impervious, that would be pools, patios, sheds, everything. So sometimes you'll see two different terms and they mean two different things.
Up north, we defined what constituted lot coverage, and it would include driveways and, you know, anything impervious to that. So, but a ratio was always, in effect, almost any jurisdiction I ever worked or lived in. And also they had a requirement for drywells. Now, that's not so practical down here to a great degree, but that would cause to accept all those impervious surfaces for a three-inch rainfall. And that's how they gauge the volume and the amount of drywell necessitated.
So.
I don't see drywells too often.
Forgive me, just, we have passed through the future land use.
Well, we had talked about, eventually it's going to all come back to you guys again, but we'll, we want to definitely look at what some other munis are doing in the county and adjust our future land use map categories to reflect an ISR for residential. I think that's just good business.
Renee, just real quick, somebody, I saw people asking after the hurricane about these, I guess, companies that raise your home. Is there a certain procedure? Because like, talking about flooding for neighbors, I mean, if you do that, first of all, you're still in the flood zone, even your house is now more protected, but your neighbor's homes are now, like, wouldn't they get that runoff?
Well, it depends, it depends on how it's being done. If, if they're, if they're just, you know, raising them on piles and then skirting the bottom, you're not really increasing any additional runoff at that point.
Does it have to come through any board?
It has to go through the Building Department for permits, absolutely, yeah, so.
Is that done a lot around here?
I, it's pretty rare because it's just, it's, it's really expensive. Now, I do know that, I think after this last hurricane, or maybe it was from, there are, there are some mitigation grants available, I think at the individual property owner level to where you can get a certain amount of money toward elevating your house above base flood elevation, so. Now, there are instances where, you know, I mean, generally they're going to, generally, my understanding is that they, they jack them and then they, they put like a new foundation in. I don't think they come back and like backfill around it with increased dirt that would cause that runoff. But our Building Department, they would evaluate that on a case-by-case basis.
With the past two hurricanes in Cedar Key. Cedar Key has done that. They, you've seen that, seen the hotels elevate and putting new foundations and raise the elevation, also homes that are along that coastline doing that. Doing it again. I have a general question. Is there anywhere, I would think it might be in housing, the subject of docks on waterfront? And I look at two issues, building requirements such as elevation, because I've seen a lot in this recent where docks were completely underwater. And some of them were destroyed. And then the other is use of waterfront for docks. I know there's been a moratorium on docks, meaning on public, you know, not, they don't own the land along the shoreline.
So, so if you have, if you have legitimate waterfront property and there's not, there's not some sort of submerged lands between you, we have some areas of the city around, I believe it's Whitcomb Bayou, where it looks like I have waterfront property, but you really don't. And there's, basically there's publicly owned land there. And so that, I think that's the moratorium area that we're basically, and it's been revisited two or three times by the Board of Commissioners and they've held firm on it, that, you know, if you live across the road from, you know, from that waterfront area, if there's, if, if the historical dock is there and you, you can maintain it, you know, but they're not allowing any new ones to be built.
Has the city ever looked at other municipalities or other communities and how they handle their, you know, publicly-owned?
Publicly-owned waterfront? I, not to my knowledge. This is something that was, like I said, I've, I've seen it come to the board at least twice. And I think the last time it went to the board, there was a very emphatic direction of the board at that time, is don't bring this back again. But obviously you can't bind a future board, but we've, it, it has been, it's, it's been decided and then upheld two or three times by the board, and they just, they're just not, don't seem, historically, the policy hasn't gone there.
Have you seen in any of the other cities where they actually do allow permitting and, you know, use of?
On private, on private?
No, on submerged land.
On submerged land?
Or city, the problem here is there's like city-owned property between
Yes, yeah.
the lot and the water.
That gets very tricky considering, because a lot of it does depend on where your boundaries are, especially with the submerged lanes between you and like, so it's, I haven't seen it specifically in, say like docks. Because, like I said, it's more, you know, I have some, I work with several other coastal municipalities. They haven't really had to do anything yet with it. And because, now granted, they haven't had like the issues like Tarpon Springs had, especially with this last hurricane. So, but from my experience, they, they kind of were shying away from it. They didn't, similar to what this, similar to what happened here is like, if it's not brought up, they're not, they don't really, because it's, because it is costly. Because we're seeing it with even just raising up, raising up houses, it's costly to do. And it brings in potentially other issues as well with the, with state government, county government, federal, depending, depending on where it is.
The, the, one of the things that was discussed kind of at length was, since it's, you know, so if a strip of land is publicly owned, and why does the, why does the property on the other side of the road have any more right to use that for a dock than any other property owner in the city? Why, and that's, that's how this whole thing kind of got, you know, so, and that was why I think the board really was like, this is, there's no fair way to do that. Why, why is it just because you happen to own the house across the street? You technically, you have water view property, but you don't have waterfront property.
True, true.
And so that, that was part of the discussion as well. To your point about docks themselves and construction standards, and we very much defer to Pinellas County. We, we have their, we follow their dock ordinances, you know, chapter and verse essentially.
Yeah, Pinellas County and DEP are the, are the agencies that really deal with dock permitting. The city just has a fairly rubber-stamp review.
Yeah, we, we review it for, you know, yeah, for center one-third of the, and the length and making sure there's not a boathouse going on it and things like that, but we don't really get into anything else.
And any new docks are built up higher, so that, now, obviously in a storm like we just had, some of them probably were underwater too, but the really low ones that we have problems with.
Do you recall though, Merle, that you're seeing that the county or the city is putting elevation, minimum elevation? Because I haven't seen that. So anyone can go out there and put a, can build to the setbacks, built to that. But I haven't seen where the county or even, even Core has identified a minimum elevation. Some people are putting them like just a foot above the wall, a couple.
For, for fixed docks, they do, DEP requires a minimum elevation.
They provide an elevation?
Now, floating docks, obviously, are a different matter, but fixed docks, yeah, they have to be up a bit. Still, to be functional docks, they, they can't be up enough to be completely out of risk, for sure.
Okay, thanks. And that's coastal management is found where? Oh, it's the next one. Nostradamus.
So we, so previously, you know, we had the coastal and conservation element, it was one element. And so we have bifurcated that into the coastal management element and the conservation element. So hopefully, again, so you're going to see some things that are like move-stricken through. So I'm going to rip this apart because it's easier. And I mean, Caroline, did you want to provide any bigger overview than that right now, or do you, as to some of the changes? Caroline drafted most of this.
I guess really the, you know, the thinking behind it was coastal management also has several pluggers. Statutory requirements for coastal management that have grown over time. There's a lot of back and forth between conservation and coastal management, but we want to keep conservation with conservation and coastal management to specifically make sure that we meet all of the requirements of the statutes. And it's going to be very difficult to read and strike through under.
Say that again?
It's going to be very difficult to read and strike through underline, it's going to be very hard to follow. I would implore you to please look at the clean version, and if we can forensically go back to the strike through underline. If we see something that we have a problem with, because it really has been designed to almost be in order meet the state statute. So if you were looking at next to the state statute, you kind of catch me there.
Did the statute change recently? Is that, because I know that we were statutorily compliant.
Somehow I, of all the people.
It has changed because the barrel of blood is the requirement.
I mean, there's also a reorganization outline.
So this, the new coastal management is designed to meet both the chapter 163 requirements for coastal management as well as. Clean for housing, but 163, 3178 for coastal management and barrel of blood. So it could really, it has not really editorialized much. There are some, there are some Tarpon-specific tweaks. I guess one of them being that we to move from no net loss of wetlands to enhancement of all wetlands with no all-site mitigation opportunities. So that's, that's a Tarpon-specific thing that's taking it even further to the protection that the statutes do. And there's some little things like that as well, but if we could go through the clean version, that would, I think, be more productive than, I mean, this is a lot of blow, but if you want, it's up to you guys.
I'm fine with reviewing the clean version.
And then if we have any problems, we can go back.
You can, you can take us directly to it.
That mixed in with something else, man?
I guess we'll, we'll do it like we have been, just let people read over it, see if they have any questions.
The first one, 2.0, not, the second one, 2.2.1. Utilize the Land Development Code to support marinas, does that imply public or private marinas? Such as Tarpon Springs Marina versus a private?
I think it would be both. And under Objective 2.2 itself, I had a question, Caroline. Objective 2.2. Coastal land uses will meet the standards and criteria for location, intensity, compatibility, and adequate infrastructure. Criteria of what? I just, I read that and I'm like, okay, I'm going to put my board hat on here and.
So it's criteria for?
All of those items.
All of the things, of course. So the original. I don't know.
Objective 2.2.
Ah, undercover.
Let's just look at the wording later. I mean, I, I just, to me, it was, seems like it's missing something and I just couldn't put my finger on. I think I understand the intent, is like, you need to review things for all these various regulations and you need to meet them, but. So, sorry Nick, I didn't mean to tramp over top of you. You were talking about 2.2.1. Oh, you had to ask about marinas, yeah, that would be both, yeah.
When it talks about dredging and filling, primarily dredging is what I'm asking about. Are they, are they talking about maintenance dredging, which everybody has to do periodically, including the city? Or should it say new dredging to specify only, only talking about dredging of, of areas that are?
Are you still under 2.2.1, or are you under?
It's the.
The bullet?
Yeah, it's the third bullet.
2.2.2. Oh, the third bullet, yes, a need for dredging.
So, yeah, so this was a, this really, what this really is, is like Marina facility siting criteria. And so I'm going to guess that you will find that criteria also in the Pinellas County Code as well. I think, considering the following, I, I, to me, I get your point. Just, to me, that would apply to siting of new facilities. If you need to do extensive dredging to get a canal into a boating facility, that's going to be discouraged. Obviously, maintenance dredging for existing stuff, I think is a different, different animal.
Just want to be careful that we're not.
So prioritize the north bank of Anclot River working waterfront is just gone, commercial fishing, gone?
So, actually, no, it's not.
That's, I have a hard time doing the clean version, I just really.
Yeah.
Right, so that is all, if you recall, we, under the, in the future land use element, which is where you're really going to find it, we now have the, the place-based map. And we called out those, those areas specifically for commercial working waterfront, the fishing. So we.
Throw in that.
They're, yeah, they're, they're, they're in the future land use element where you're going to key on them and find them rather than trying to core through an entire.
And that move was made largely because this is very regulatory language.
Yeah.
Regulating land use, it's not really about management control. I mean, it's definitely related, but it's more very regulatory layer.
If you were to go, let's just look at 2.2.1, and then take me to the blue line one. And where's 2.2.1?
2.2.1?
Yeah, I'm just trying to see, like, I'm looking at the clean version, but like, if I had to go back and look at.
2.2.1, remember?
Yeah, policy 2.2.1 on the clean version. Where's that on the spread, on the big sheet? What page? Six at the top? I see it at four. Huh?
It's totally new, 2.2.1, it's a totally new policy.
What did it replace, or is, where, where would it have fit in under this old one? I mean.
We had, well, we, we had, we had very similar criteria, I believe it was in the future land use element for siting of Marina facilities.
Okay, I found it, sorry, I found it. Okay.
I'm glad you all found it because I apparently am missing two pages of this.
It's on page six, it's the top one. It's new, totally new. Okay.
Missing two pages of the strike through underline.
Yeah, yeah, it does.
Preference.
Should we say that though? Because dredging, I could see it includes maintenance. But would one read this and say that? Yeah, if I read this, I would think that that applies to any type of dredging. So that's why we should. So maybe we add the adjective "new"?
Uh, yes. I, I, I think.
Policy 2.2.2 right below that talks about, I think, the more typical dredge and fill that you guys are referring to as well. So maybe we could try some clarity between the two.
We're talking about some change. What, since we already come up with a policy on what, also required general dredging.
My, I mean, my, my interpretation of 2.2.1 is that this is meant to address new sighting of new marinas. And it's not, so I think, just, I think we want to amend this policy language a little to, you know, support new marinas and boating access facilities.
Yes, yes.
Considering the following criteria.
Yes, that makes sense. If you put it up there, then all of these categories apply to new.
Well, somewhere I noticed it actually does mention to prefer expansion of existing.
Right.
Facilities also. So, so this is not necessarily entirely new facilities.
I would, I would just say to get to new and expand it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think if, if we say new in front of the dredging, that covers it. As, and as somebody said, it's, it's almost impossible to get through DEP and permit new dredging at this point anyway.
But you can't get a maintenance.
You can, you can do maintenance, yeah.
So, Renee, just with the future land use, and maybe you can just make a note to go back when we go back to the future land use, how this ties in with protecting commercial fishing in the working waterfront, because I'm seeing a lot of preferences for marinas and, and I, with this inconsistency between the one and the other, I don't want that to become a problem where, oh, it's inconsistent, so you have to change your future land use or whatever, because they should be.
Yeah, okay, okay. No, I, I.
Yeah, I don't want to see all our commercial and working waterfront overrun by people with marine, just so they can put their boats.
Ab- absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, and, and, you know. So, I mean, this is a, this, Caroline, this bulleted list, is that coming from Pinellas County? Where, how, was that a previous list that we had?
Is this statute saying that we need to make preference for marinas?
Because, well, but to your point, I mean, I think we can also, we can, I think we have the latitude to add a bullet that says, you know, impact on existing working waterfront as a review criteria.
Yeah, I mean, what I'm seeing right now is two inconsistent policies, and every time that happens, one of them has to change. And there's, this is not, because this change is not to become statutorily compliant. I know, because you told us we were always, we were statutorily compliant before we even started this process. And there's no statutory requirement to make room for marinas.
I don't. Let me, I, I wonder, I, I see what you're saying. I, I'm not, yeah, I'm not looking at, I don't think that this is meant to prioritize marinas, but it's.
But maybe add something to consider, you know, all of this with consideration for the future land use element that was all listed instead of, so add it and just refer to that policy within this one so that it's tied together.
Okay. So add a tieback to the flow.
On that 2.2.3, where it says ensure development proposals that may adversely impact coastal environmentally sensitive areas are reviewed by other affected jurisdictions and agencies. Do, should it say all instead of other?
By all effect, yes, yes. By all, yes. That's a good.
To, to address some of the concern about the commercial boats and commercial fishing and stuff, you could also say utilize, on 2.2.1, utilize the land development code to support both commercial and pleasure boat marinas and boating access facilities or something like that, where you do recognize that there's a lot of, there's a lot of the marinas in the area are, are for commercial boats primarily.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I want to revisit this one.
Are we done with that topic?
Hmm?
It's been a long time.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's, I'm sorry, who was?
2.2.2.
Mm-hmm.
I read it and I see where it says, all right, so review the approval of, of the Pinellas County Water Navigation Board for docking facilities, seawalls, dredge and fill and other activities under their review. Shouldn't we also be saying that they should be seek, seek other approvals? Because we know DEP, Army Corps of Engineer, has to approve even a residential permit. So we exclude them to only say that they're good if they only get Pinellas County's.
Well, 2.2.4 includes DEP then.
Yeah, that's for development. If I wanted to apply for a dock permit, this is specific about.
Sometimes it might require, yeah.
Docking and seawalls, dredge and fill and any other activities. Maybe it falls under any other, but.
So, so there's other, we have, there's a bit of a, I'm going to look to the attorney. So we, we can't hold up someone's building permit for, let's say it's a dock permit. And let's say that for some reason, you think it might need an Army Corps permit. We don't have the jurisdiction to say, you have to show us that before we give you the permit if it's, now, Pinellas County's different because they are the permitting authority for, specifically for docks, and I mean, we operate underneath of them. So we review it and it's still, and they have to issue a permit. But to my knowledge, we can't really outright require, you know, a swift mud permit or a DEP permit before we would issue a building permit for a dock.
My, my, my statement is dated. I know that when I applied for my dock on Kramer Bayou, I had to get the Army Corps sign off and I had to get DEP letter of no objection. Even had to get a DNR letter of no objection. So I just cautious that the way it reads now.
But who was pulling, but who, who was, was the county stipulating that before the county would give you the permit to build? Because we, we don't issue the dock.
I don't know.
Yeah, okay, so.
And I, you remember when you went into effect, you just said DNR.
Yeah.
That's pretty darn old.
So I said it's dated. I said it's dated. I said it's dated.
I think that law went into effect after that.
Yeah, it's dated.
I don't know what year it was. I don't remember.
It's just right now, the way it reads is just wrong. It's only requiring the applicant, besides getting a city, to just get Pinellas County only. And I know Corps.
Did you notify people, you know, hey, you may.
It's a, it's in the application.
We'll, we'll take a broader look at it.
Yeah, take a look.
Yeah, because I have, I'm actually dealing with code enforcement cases similar.
Mm-hmm.
Because they did, because they didn't get the permit.
We can come after them afterwards.
Yes, oh, yeah.
But, but we can't hold it up if they don't.
But if you don't tell them that you, that they should be getting it.
Right.
They can say, wait, I got what you asked for.
Now, obviously, if it's on your application.
Yeah, it is.
If it's on your application for, for a permit right now, it necessarily doesn't impact, if someone's going to hold up as a argument, well, 2.2.2 says I don't have to do it.
Mm-hmm.
So therefore, and I, permit, permitting office is going to go to, go tell you to pound sand, but, you know, it's got to get it.
Yeah.
But.
We'll see if we can.
And we're doing it down below where we talk about other agencies, other affected jurisdiction agencies. I think we just add that to this one.
Or reviewed. I mean, we can, you know, maybe it's a matter of, you know, making sure that applicants are aware that they had their other permitting requirements and, you know, I, I don't want to, I don't want to put the city in the position of every, every dock permit, every, you know, seawall permit, that we are now notifying every jurisdiction, affected jurisdiction.
That's where my next ask question is of, of you all. Can we at least check with Pinellas County?
Mm-hmm.
Since we're saying that we, we, we require a Pinellas County approval, and let's ask them, what does their application say?
Yes.
For these categories? And if they does cover it, then you can keep the statement like you have right now, because you know Pinellas County's going to be asking that.
I mean, we actually use Pinellas County's application.
I know.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what we get, is their application, so, okay.
Let me ask this question. It's just more over this whole, this whole section. Are we taking into consideration the, the, the climate change impacts and making sure that this has some form of addressing that or making sure that the applicant or anything that we do here has a, has a tone of climate change mitigation?
Sea level rise mitigation.
That's why I talked about the minimum elevation for the dock.
Right. Um, we, we definitely have sea level rise considerations in the, I don't know, they were in the old element, are they in the new element?
I see objective 2.5.
They're in the, they're in the, it's in the future land use element and it's in, huh?
It's in Goal 2.
Yeah, it is. I see it.
It's overarching that we need to consider.
Yeah, resilience to flooding, climate-related impacts, yeah. And then three, oh, there it is, yeah.
There's a couple areas where it actually, we're making a point to, to highlight, or not highlight, but mention that it's climate-related impacts. 2.5 has it.
Yeah.
And 2.3.1, that's good.
So, I'm looking at 2.5.2 and it says, evaluate the feasibility of developing plans and programs. I, do, do we want, evaluate the feasibility or develop plans and programs to incentivize, incentivize climate adaptation techniques?
Here, here.
You know?
Following that, it says the acquisition of property. I think it is, it is, it is being a little cagey, honestly, you know, evaluate the feasibility. I think it's, it's about money. So I think that would need to be.
To de, oh, to develop a plan or program?
Yeah, so it's really.
Who's that, who is that meant for? Citizens?
I think that would be more for the folks.
The city.
Through the city, you know?
So this is a, 2.5.2 is really meant for the city to be sensitive to this, not developers.
Right.
Property owners, okay.
Well, what it is, it's like, it, it's develop, if you take, just take out the evaluate the feasibility for a moment. If, if it's just, you know, develop plans and programs to incentivize climate adaptation techniques and the acquisition of property to prevent incompatible development in areas of repeated damage, okay. That could be a costly endeavor.
Yeah.
So I think that's, you know, that speaks to the, you know.
Evaluate the feasibility.
Evaluate the feasibility of. Not quite as, as strong as you probably would like, but.
Yeah.
Well, I'm going to motion for what the lady suggested, which is to strike evaluate the feasibility of and just go with capital develop plan four.
I'm fine with that if everybody's aware that we're not ever going to develop plans and programs that aren't feasible.
Yeah. That's actually probably very true.
Don't go making sense.
It makes total sense. Well, we could do, then let the board bounce it back.
Yeah. Well, and let's, I think if we couch it in the, the and is not a mandatory here. So develop plans and programs to incentivize, incentivize climate, climate adaptation techniques.
And/or.
And/or the acquisition of property, you know, just make it a little less, yeah.
Yeah.
Because there are things you can do for adaptation that we can provide incentives for, you know, even though it's maybe not recognized by FEMA for flood insurance purposes, but, you know, dry floodproofing your home is, you know, can do a lot, because you can dry floodproof, you know, up to your, usually to your lowest window elevation and, you know, you can, you can do some things that secure your property that may not be recognized by FEMA, but saves you a claim.
True.
Is, is this an obvious tieback location to the imperv, perv policy?
Um.
Just because that is the easiest and most logical way to deal with all the things that were listed. Actually, it's under Goal 3.
Um, is, do we, do we have, in, in the coastal, it's probably, it may probably be in the conservation element.
Okay.
But we'll, we'll make a note to make sure that either here or in the conservation element that we have some sort of a policy that directs us back to the future land use element in, in terms of, you know, evaluating impervious surface ratios, especially in like residential development for, you know, to reduce flooding impacts and things of that nature.
Maybe that would be a nice segue to your suggestion of encouraging, now, I'm going to be a little bit cagey for a second, but there are triggers within the building code and the easiest trigger is the 50% rule.
Mm-hmm.
That's an obvious trigger. But there could be a more subtle trigger that encourages the waterproofing of low levels, which is common sense that people don't really understand. The drywall gets wet, they take it out, they put the old drywall back in instead of cement board and moving those electric boxes just up a little bit. So without getting too deep into that, maybe that is a really nice segue of, hey, let's use an opportunity whenever possible to help those homes, residences or businesses that are below or within that consistent stormwater high-rise to say, hey, okay, here's one chance, fix it. Here's two chance, fix it. Three chance, let's fix it.
So, and, and I think, yeah, I think that's a good, a good, a good approach. One of the things that we run into is once, once you tip that 50% rule with FEMA, then it's a, it's an all or nothing. You, you've got to bring it up to BFE and, 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 and they don't accept floodproofing and things like that in, in residential. So, but to your point of there needs, so you're, you almost have to have some other pretty heavy-duty incentive to get people to, to do those types of things, some sort of trigger or threshold or incentive. So I, I like where you're going.
And I don't know what that is. It just, I could, I could, but I could sense that, hey, if we're going to have consistent high water.
Mm-hmm.
We are.
And, and, so what is that magical thing that helps the homeowner make that?
Right.
Logical move?
Yeah, reduce permit fees or.
And, and then this, this could also tie back to your place-based map, special place-based map, tho, those that are easily highlighted as flood zones that say, hey, if you're going to put a new roof on, we would encourage you to do this also.
Mm-hmm.
Can I?
Please.
Are we done with, no, I don't, I have a new topic, but I'll wait till.
Let's go with the new topic.
Uh, 2.5.3, I like it. Require the removal, relocation, or structural modification of public infrastructure that experiences repeated store damage, damage, including flood damage. Can we be bold enough to say that we should also add private? I mean, we've got situations where private infrastructures are creating repeated damage and they're not doing anything about them. And so is there, I mean, is that, I don't know. I'm, I'm putting it out there because this, this is good. It tells the city.
The difference is it's, you're telling private citizens what to do with their property. And at that point, it's.
Well, we have code enforcement that tells them what to do when they're violating a code.
But if they, but, again, considering code enforcement is to, is corrective in nature, but if we're going to get to the point of now you have to move it or remove, locate, remove, relocate or structural modification, then we're coming into Burt Harrisack, we're coming into inverse condemnation, we're coming into a lot of, a lot of other issues.
Good point. I put it out there and I got, I got a reasonable response. That's good.
This is probably keeping in mind the 15% threshold, which they wouldn't, they shouldn't start, but our federal control, it's not like they can fix a 50%.
I, I just had about a day, a half-day hearing on the 50% rule. Another, bringing me to spell it, I am very familiar with that. That's separate, and that.
And she'd be aware of the.
Oh, they, everyone needs to be aware of the 50% rule, especially if there's water around.
And who repetitive laws, companies can damage.
Good. Okay. Good point.
How much is damaged of the, the value or the amount of structure?
Okay, I was kind of assuming that meant if you have more than 50% damage, then.
So there, I won't take, there's, there's two versions of it. There's substantial damage and substantial improvement.
Okay.
And if you basically go over 50% of the structure value, then you have to, you're no longer grandfathered in, you have to. And if you basically go over 50% of the structure value, then you have to, you're no longer grandfathered in, you have to raise it or remove, whatever your improvements are.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Goal three. Now, is this a new goal or it's been one and we're just updating it?
That, that's been there.
Okay.
When it says elimination of existing, and I, I fully confess, I know nothing about septic systems or the city sewer. But what I have a question about is elimination of existing septic systems. And what I thought of is where I live and they have what's called a lift station. Are they talking about those as well or just private septic systems?
So, this is meant to, this is meant to, so, and, okay. These are exceptions to the public expenditures. So, basically, we do want to encourage or allow elimination, public funds to be spent in support of eliminating septic systems.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that's.
And the lift station is in the septic, it's just pumping.
It's a pumping system.
From one point to another point.
Right, right. And this is where, for some reason, I don't have the rest of this printed out, so.
A septic system is on, stays on your lot?
Right.
The lift station is a way that everyone uses here to get all of that back to work.
Yeah.
It's to make the poop flow uphill.
Yeah, it's a, it makes it flow.
Gravity.
They're okay and they're safe.
Gotcha. Thank you.
That was nice.
It's to help blank flow upward.
It's all about the poop?
So, if I, if I may, I, I wanna do a tieback, um, excuse me. Because it's referenced twice, um, backing on a goal two under objective two point one, policy two point one point one. Near the end of the sentence, there was an and. Now, first I circled. What is an asset-based economic? What is asset-based economic? Right. And if this has been answered, forgive me, I'm slow.
No, no. It's, no, it's, so, most economic development plans are, are needs-based, i.e. you look at what your market is and you figure out what, what, what you don't have and that's the thing that you try to go after and get.
Okay.
Asset-based looks at literally that. What are the, what are the assets that drive jobs in your existing economy? What are those things that you wanna make sure that you preserve? And then, so it gets to intangible things like, you know, natural resources, um, your cultural resources, the things that draw people here. So, does that make sense?
Oh, it makes perfect sense. I am, am embarrassed that I had to ask. Okay. Now, this is gonna make sense in, in a moment. First, because I couldn't get that, I think that there should maybe be an asterisk or an explanation of what asset-based, or just call it tourism waterfront cultural. Just, just call it out. And then perhaps, and, this is what's critical as we are forward, direct permanent residential population concentrations outside of the CHHA. Is that, in my opinion, that and, and that that I know there's a fancy word for it, like residual sentence or, and if you're an English major, it says something else. I think that's too important to be buried at the end of that other excellent topic and perhaps needs to become a policy on its own.
Okay, I was looking at two different things again.
Right, cause I'm talking too fast.
Three, which, where are we on the?
So, we're at policy, we had to backtrack because it's referenced again on something we are talking about. Two point one point one, as a suggestion, that the and, in quotations, direct permanent residential population concentrations outside the coastal high hazard area, perhaps I would suggest stands as a policy on its own and I'll give an argument as to why, because it is a state policy. Okay.
I think it will probably fall under that initial clause of utilizing the, the whole.
You're, you're, absolutely it is to prioritize, prioritize water-dependent uses, but then we move to direct away. So, that's just an idea. And then it's, as we move forward to where we're at, is that, uh, under goal three, and they're, they're, they're tied together at, at a long string. Goal three, without reading the whole string, reduce the risk to human life. Objective number one, limit public expenditures that subsidize development in coastal high hazard area. So, again, we're referring to the CHHA again, but in two different places. There's something that I'm like, well, th, th, this is a really critical, really critical element, goal, policy, however you'd wanna define it. And it has very important implications.
Yeah, it makes sense to split that into, yeah.
Okay. And then limit public expenditures in the CHHA.
Could I interrupt you just for a second?
Go ahead.
In the same vein, looking, and I'm probably going too far with this, but I wonder what everybody else thinks. Objective three point one says limit public expenditures that subsidize blah blah. Just, would it be horrible to put severely limit?
No.
Probably, I guess.
Yeah.
I think what it's trying to say is that these are the only public expenditures that you can, so, I think you are, so you're.
Yeah. I mean, we, we have a lot of, we have a lot of the city in the coastal high hazard area. And so, you know, in case in point, we had a lot of public roads that got flooded. And so, to be able to say, you know, to not be able to come back and fix those roads and, and maybe affect the infrastructure in large swaths of the city is just really.
That would be a significant economic impact on the city.
Yes, it would.
And the public.
There are places that have done it, but like the Outer Banks of North Carolina, they basically said, you're on your own.
We're kind of doomed, aren't we? Because we really are huddled around the water.
We, we have a significant, it, it is definitely something that needs to be, you know, not taken lightly. I used to think I wanted to live on the water, but now, no.
There's a downside.
Well, actually, you can live in the water.
Yeah, yeah. Did that. I was in the Navy. All right, moving on. I'm sorry.
I love that, and it's slosh. I love it.
Love what?
Sea, lake and overland surges from hurricanes, acronym slosh. I love it.
Somebody thought a long time.
Where are you at when you see slosh?
Three point one point one.
Okay. Oh, yeah, okay. A sloshy.
Oh, something that I just remembered. I was having a conversation with someone from Pinellas County and I've actually talked, called up and talked with Megan. Megan's our floodplain coordinator. So, the county performed their own vulnerability analysis that is, from what I am told, much more accurate than the FEMA level analysis based on LIDAR. And so, there is a Pinellas County ordinance that basically, now the way that their, their floodplain ordinance works, you have to build to their standard or the FEMA elevation, whichever is more restrictive. Where are, we are looking at, you know, I just started looking at, at that option, but I would like us to add a policy in here somewhere to evaluate implementation of Pinellas County vulnerability assessment ordinance outcomes or something like that. So, I'd, we've got it established as a policy.
I'd support that.
Okay.
I agree.
Yep.
Pick the wording wisely, though.
Yes.
Meaning that it's good. Evaluate.
Yeah.
Assess.
Yeah.
And even implement.
The most restrictive.
So, a lot of this we looked at recently.
Yeah. Three point two point one. What is DU after five?
Dwelling units.
Dwelling units, okay.
Maybe we should spell that out.
If you add an I, it would be a problem.
Yeah, you could say five units.
Uh, three point two point two. Provide timely notices. Timely pretty broad?
It is pretty broad. Um, and, and it's really, that one I, I know off the top of my head where it came from. Um, I think it said something about early.
Yeah, prompt.
This is another one of those, I mean, Pinellas County really issues, they, they are the ones that issue the evac orders. So, although I, I mean, I guess if we had local knowledge of something, you know, I suppose that we could override them and.
Well, can we at least add wording that kind of references that, that takes up?
Well, I think I, I, I use the word timely specifically because a lot of times, um, plans say things like early or as soon as possible.
Early, I saw fifty hours.
So, it's, it's, it needs to be timely for the people that it needs to be timely for. So, we need to tell people at mobile homes and on the coast, you need to go now. They need to know first. So, that's timely for them. Um, as you're seeing things progress, you may timely need to say, okay, you guys too, you need to go.
Yeah, I mean, timely notice for the keys is a lot different than this for.
And that's why you have the, the different zones, you know, in C and D, it gets notified first.
But you make a good point, though, about, you made the, you made the comment about maybe defining the evacuees. Cause evacuees means everyone.
Well, it doesn't, I mean, it's for certain storms that mean everyone, but not for every storm. For some storms, it's just, you know.
So, is, is the word evacuees good enough to mean mobile home versus?
No, I think maybe adding something about.
Hey, Caroline. I'm sorry, I just, something about this also just jumped up at me. Provide timely notice that evacuees leave the city entirely.
Yeah.
That, I think entirely, we really, we want people to shelter as close to where they are as possible. I mean.
I think the way we need to fix this is people order to evacuate.
Yes.
Yes. Good point.
Couldn't we just even start it with?
Or seek shelter. I mean, let's, yeah, let's, let's revisit this wording.
Yeah, in effect, let's not make it about the people, let's make it about the area.
Well, couldn't we just put in front of there, coordinate with Pinellas County's, whatever.
Evacuation.
In order to provide, so it kind of puts the emphasis on Pinellas.
Required evacuees.
Yeah, like in accordance with.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, and that, that leave the city entirely. I mean, that's way out of date now. They really don't want people to, I mean, you need to go to a location that's appropriate, but you don't need to go to Orlando.
No, the storm just follows you there when you do that.
It does, exactly.
I speak from experience.
I left targeting to go to Cedar Key and ended up, had to turn around because it was hitting Cedar Key.
For Charlie, we ran to Kissimmee and had thirty-five mile an hour winds here and, and a hundred and fifteen on the parking lot at the hotel.
This is just like a, maybe a generic question. When I look at three point two point three, it reads, update the land development code to prohibit the development of new or expanding nursing facilities, blah, blah, blah. So, we there say prohibit. Is that consistent with our maps that says, okay?
Yeah.
It's already, it's.
Yeah, I don't know why, it, we can actually look at that. I, I, we may wanna just say, continue to prohibit, cause we're already.
Yeah.
I think we do still allow expansions for a certain point.
Okay. Okay, we'll check on that one, yeah. That.
But let's say it does, if it does, if we still allow expansions, does that then become inconsistent with this, though? I mean, what happens if it's zoned and it can have expansions?
Yeah, we need, we need to, I mean, our own hospital, case in point. I mean, it, it's in an A evacuation zone and they've done numerous expansions and improvements since Advent Health took, took over. So, I think, just, just look at, I don't know about.
Well, you got nursing.
Hospital, I don't, I don't know. I mean, they, yeah, but they just had to evacuate the hospital too. So, I mean, it's a, I don't.
This is saying about prohibiting development.
Right, development of new or expanded.
New and expanding is pretty rigid.
I'd, I'd do a thought experiment is that wouldn't a particular evacuation zone also be subject to the building structure, its generation capacity, its elevation? In fact, it would be fair to say that under the right circumstances, if it were upgraded, the hospital would be a location for people to evacuate to.
Good point.
Well, I can tell you they're not there now.
No, well, they're, just, yeah.
Yeah.
Key, key word there was, key words there were thought experiment.
Yeah. Vertical evacuation.
Right, right.
And they did, they were lined up.
I wanna say, I, I think it would be interesting for us to talk with, the, the problem with, with that and that instance, would you ever feel so safe if your, if your relative of yours was in the hospital and there was a, you know, a hurricane coming that someone could arbitrarily say, eh, I think, you know, we did all these improvements, we're not gonna evacuate the hospital. But if you lose access to roads, if you lose utilities, if you lose, they have generators, but it, it's just, I think there's too much, you know.
I don't think the risk analysis is gonna say stay.
But I do know, you know, I, I guess, part, I think part of the, part of the analysis for me is that the, you may not wanna be expanding your room capacity, but other facilities, uh, your emergency rooms, your, you know, your diagnostic facilities, your offices and things like that, that should be, you know, I think that expanding and including that stuff is, is great, but I think expanding your non-ambulatory room count, and I don't think they're really doing that. I think if nothing else, they're probably actually decreasing that somewhat. That, I think that's where the, so maybe it's more to the, maybe we need to finesse this a little bit with ambulatory versus non-ambulatory and we can, we can put some thought into that.
Good.
Yeah, we don't, don't wanna start a policy that we know we're violating already.
Well, I said, we already have the, right now it reads as new, doesn't it? Yeah. Does it, well, in a current land development code, I think it says.
I think it only applies to evacuation A.
It might only be A, but Pinellas, that's what it is. Pinellas County, the Pinellas County comp plan says B as well. And that was, that's, we'll look at this a little bit more.
Okay.
And we'll, yeah. I definitely wanted to follow suit with the, with the B for residential living facilities, you know, things of that, because they're, they're just, they're awful to have to evacuate in advance of a storm. I, you know, when Charlie hit, we, we were still in, the, the city was still responsible for evacuating the, you know, the assisted living facilities. And, I mean, I was out there helping evacuate Bayou Village, not Bayou Village, with the one on the bay on, and it was just like, this is just crazy. Why is this thing located here? It's gorgeous to live there, but anyway, I digress. Sorry.
Policy three point two point five has a, has an R that's loose in it.
Yeah. Yeah. Is that the right number, on 328, Emergency Management Implementation Guide, is that an, is that the right title for that?
I have no idea what it is.
Let's, yeah, let's, let's check that. For some reason, I don't think that's a thing anymore.
3.2.9, I mean, it's there with a good reason, but it's really kind of vague.
It became a little more vague because the original policy was that the City of Tarpon Springs shall give first priority to available funds for road traffic improvements that go through the evacuation level of service to do a existing hurricane evacuation route.
So, should, so I wonder, so I wonder if they should say, we'll give priority to, maybe during capital improvement planning? Is that really what we're talking about?
So, yeah, what I'm saying is, I don't know that there really are any practical road or traffic improvements that are going to improve evacuation.
You know, I would politely disagree.
Oh, right.
So, recently, I drove down what is one of our new evacuation roads, Maris, that has been expanded. And it was a really big deal, and there's a whole bunch of backstory to that. So, I'm rolling down Maris, and I thought, I'm going to take it all the way to nineteen for the first time. I took it all the way to the nineteen, and it's a right turn only.
Yeah.
And I thought, no one, oh, maybe I'm biased here, that if we were evacuating Tarpon Springs, no one's heading right and heading south. Because everyone is heading left and heading north, because you need to get out, because there's no way out to head south. So, my, my thought process might be flawed there, but I would consider that an excellent example of a road that was designed for evacuation purposes. At great expense to the city. It cost us an arm and a leg, and it only turns right.
So, actually, we just had a storm where we had to evacuate south, so that...
Don't go making sense!
But...
It's my party!
In reality, there's really nothing that will be going to help people evacuate off the peninsula that is Pinellas County unless it's an exception. Because you're going to get to a point...
Could be signs. It could be signs that say evacuation route.
It did, it just, now, without getting into that detail and this detail, it did strike me as odd that this new route wasn't either or. Because what it meant was, anyone that evacuates or is using Maris as a way to leave the city, because we have a very fixed number of those. And again, the Board of Commissioners, at great expense, got that road all the way through, and it's a right-hand turn only.
But it could take you to non-evac places in Central County, so, I mean...
Yeah, Alderman Hill. Um, no, you're, it's, but to your point, you know, of, and I don't know that, I mean, if we had, let's suppose we had, you know, a Cat Four, a Cat Five bearing down on us, and we knew we needed to evacuate the city, if that is, that is an east-west route out, I have no doubt that they would be funneling traffic so that you could take a left turn out of there. They will do contra-flow, they will do a lot of different things. They do it in the Keys all the time to get people out, because there's just no, you know, so...
Temporary bridge.
Yeah, there's just no, you just have to, so, I mean, I feel like if it really needed to be, you know, a left out of there somehow, that they'd make that happen through traffic control.
I mean, there's signs, but it doesn't change the number of bridges that we have off this peninsula.
Yeah, well, the round is Keystone.
See, I thought they extended mirrors, so all the, the contractors had a direct route to the, to the dump site.
There was, there was a lot of reasons for, when, when that was, you know, when that, one, you legitimately have more traffic, you know, you have more people living in those apartments there. I can't remember how many there are, but two-hundred-and-some apartments. So, all, the transportation impact fees from that development went into supporting that road. The, it was, I mean, hurricane evacuation was a consideration. The city very much did want that east-west connection completed all the way through, to your point. You know, there's no feasible way right now to put a left out of there. I mean, you'd have to put, in order to put a light at that, you'd have to probably remove a light at MLK. And that, you know, this is still a bit of a limited right-of-way there, it'd be difficult to do, not impossible. So, you have a constrained right-of-way on, on the extension of mirrors out. It was, used to be mango, so it was, there's not a lot of right-of-way to work with there to, to really, think about the volume of traffic that, and what happens when you get to US-19 on MLK. It flares out into a right turn and then a, I mean, you've got a lot more turning movements there because you have right-of-way. You just don't have that at mirrors at US-19.
Thank you. I'm afraid that you took me far too seriously. Far too seriously. Just that, the sentence previously written in the sentence, now, it makes sense, is that there should be a concept for prioritizing funds. And sometimes subtle changes make big changes. If there were to be a catastrophic event, that God bless that we haven't, but I'll be truthful and go, you know, no one thought it was going to happen down south. And there was a catastrophic event, and they struggled to leave, and they didn't have timely notice, and they stayed, and the storm surge took care of the rest. So, if a left-hand turn helped save two lives, well, then, it's worthy of at least discussion and making sure that we're prioritizing that.
All right.
So, we're at 3.2.9? That's, is that what the discussion was?
That's what we were talking about, yeah.
And I, I think, I think, just available funds for improvement to evacuation level of service would be better, as soon as proven.
Okay, Emergency Management Initiatives.
Wait, it said 3.3.4, is, that's deja vu. Didn't we just...
Yeah, I was just reading that myself.
Okay.
Which one?
3.3.4.
3.4. Redundant, I think, is the word.
Yeah, we've got that covered up above. Under the...
Well, the previous one was public.
Public, it requires the removal, relocation, or structural modification of any infrastructure that experiences repeated storm damage. So, that's a little broader.
Yes. Um, whenever, okay, yeah. So, that would get back to my, just concerns of, well, I understand with code enforcement, FEMA and all that, FEMA requirements, all that, that may, that can, has tendency to take care of itself. So, that one may be, may be a little broad, but that's my, that's my, since it's just any structure.
Would policy 3.3.8 perhaps be a good location to put the verbiage in, in regards to the new Pinellas County guidelines?
Yeah.
Since it's already referenced there.
That's flood-resistant construction requirements and applicable floodplain management. Yeah, we're in the ballpark here. I mean, whether it goes there or it's a separate policy. I want to go back, though. I'm concerned about, do you advise us taking 3.3.4 out? Is that just overly broad, or should it just be?
Well, this ties to coastal climate flooding, climate change. The other one was more about public facility.
Public facility, well, yeah.
Now, theoretically, because my concern is it may be overly broad.
What if it just said encourage instead of require?
Assess.
I kind of like the require.
What if we changed and said evaluate and/or require?
Because ultimately, especially if we're complying with FEMA regulations, if we're complying with the floodplain ordinance, and quite frankly, just code enforcement, that should correct if we need to, if it needs to be removed or relocated or made structural modifications, FEMA or FEMA or floodplain should be able to resolve that by itself.
Couldn't we keep the sentence and then just refer to the FEMA or, you know, C?
I mean, it's written as infrastructure.
Yeah.
Caroline said this is an existing policy.
It's an existing policy that we've had. Require the removal, relocation, or structural or structural modification of any infrastructure.
So, the original, the current language for 3.3.4 is require the removal, relocation, or structure modification of any infrastructure that experiences repeated storm damage.
So, this is, that's the original.
Yeah, and so we've just carried it over.
What compels us to change it?
My concern is it's overly broad.
How would you, if you, if you didn't want it, if you wanted to correct the overly broad, what would you, would you, how would you reword it?
Couldn't you just cite the FEMA regulations, or, you know, so it becomes clear what...
Well, it is in 3.3.1. It says comply with FEMA regulations.
That's true.
Public.
I think at this point, we're looking at all.
Yeah.
Is, is, is a road considered infrastructure?
Yes.
So, then we could just put, we'll just substitute, I'll just read it, require the removal, relocation, or modification of any road that experiences repeated storm damage.
Yeah, but it's also utilities. There's infrastructures broad and specific, though.
So, think about something like Harbor Watch is a good example. Now, I don't know if how badly Harbor Watch might flood, but that is all private. The roads, the utilities, it's all private. So, you know, I think another key here, it says repeated storm damage. So, it's not like single incident. It does say repeated, you know, but by that logic, you know, we shouldn't be, you know, doing anything to Dodecanese Boulevard. I mean, so, I mean, this is a, this cuts both ways, private and public.
Yeah.
You know, so, if you think about, you know, Anclot Road, and we have a lot of, a lot of roads and segments, intersection of MLK and Alt-19, that repeatedly, now, I guess, does it have damage, or is it just flooding? So, the infrastructure itself is, is the infrastructure being damaged, not what's around it. So, I, you know...
That's why I kind of like the assess or evaluate, assess and evaluate, somehow put it where we're, it warrants an evaluation and assessment.
So, you know, I guess...
Should we just say assess and evaluate for relocation or structural modification?
So, yeah, assess...
Assess and evaluate.
Assess any infrastructure that experiences repeated storm damage for removal, relocation, or structural modification.
Perfect.
Flip the sentence and put it, all right.
Now, I have one, another one. Objective 3.3, and also exec, exec, policy 3.3.6, it's just something that my pet peeve. Where it says, on 3.3, the second sentence, I'll just continue the second sentence, management initiatives to reduce risk to life. I propose risk to life, health, and safety. Because this implies if, only time you've got a risk is if you lose a life. And we need to be thinking about, you know, life, health, and safety.
So, life, health, safety, and property?
Yeah, and then, and property, the natural, because then it goes to and property. And it exists again in 3.3.6, but that's just my, you know, engineer hat on.
I don't, I mean, I don't see anything wrong with that. And in three, say the same thing in 3.1?
Yeah, and you might just look at your...
The last sentence, yeah.
Yeah, anything we talk about risk of life, we should be doing a word search, and always add health and safety to it.
Safety, good point. Okay. I'm sorry, I'm going to put a cough drop in my mouth, so I sound a little garbled.
So, I didn't know that we monitored the Kern's incredible sea level rise data. That's pretty cool.
Better.
Yeah, yeah.
We're watching.
And so do those of us who have docs. We monitor it all the time.
Absolutely.
And boats on lifts.
Oh, yeah. I do look at where my house is and look out thirty, forty, fifty years and see where they think the low, moderate, and high sea level rise is going to be. Someone could dictate when I sell my house.
Some people are going to get new waterfronts.
Yep, I was going to say.
From a, kind of like overall review of this, are we consistent with other coastal cities with regards to their versions of that, of addressing this coastal management?
Let's just put it this way, my former job was with Pinellas County.
Okay, so...
Their coastal management has been approved by the state.
That's good, that's good. Like to hear that. You know, I have the app for Pinellas County, and while I was in Greece, I'm getting notifications on my app. That's good.
Can we talk about 3.3.11 for a moment?
I was just looking at that one, yeah.
I think this is a holdover policy. But my biggest thing is like, what if this is just not a good location to have shelter?
Yeah, because most of them aren't.
Now, now, they, they will evacuate mobile homes even if they're nowhere near water. And I think it's because of wind. So, if this is meant to be for wind mitigation, I think we need to make a distinction here, because I don't want to necessarily encourage
Yeah, on-site flood.
Hurricane evacuation shelter level type of thing for flood if the mobile home park's sitting in an A evacuation zone, or a B or C, frankly, so...
That's peak dry.
So, let, yeah, let's just see if we can wordsmith this one a little bit, too, you know, except where evacuation is now, we just need to, somehow, we just need to make that...
Make it fit.
Distinguish, yeah.
The locate, the environment, the word is, or where...
Of course, we're not going to probably have any new mobile home parks anyway, so...
Yeah, that's probably a pretty moot point.
Um, how would everybody feel with just changing it to developments, meaning to provide onsite shelter, will you do rest in twenty-four feet per person projected to be...
I like it.
It's a lot cleaner.
It is.
So, to drill down into that a little bit farther, would the term onsite shelter, would that trigger a building that provided adequate level of safety? Does it go into a tornado-proof building or a flood-resistant building? Well, let's take flood out, a wind-related building where it's actually, it's just not the clubhouse. Does that make sense?
Maybe we have to define shelter.
And if it is, at least maybe there's an asterisk that says, hey, it's not just the barbecue hut.
A shed.
That is, it is a sheltered space of safety.
I think, well, so, so here's the reality of, even our own public safety building that we operate our emergency management out of, is built only to a Cat C hurricane wind load standard. So, I think what, I think what I would be comfortable saying is requiring, just like we just did with multifamily in the coastal high hazard area, we require them to be built at plus-three base flood elevation and the next higher wind load category under the Florida Building Code.
Nice consistency.
So, I think maybe adding something to this policy that would require new, new shelters to be, you know, new onsite sheltering to be built to those standards.
Good one.
That was really good.
See what the cough drop did? It stimulated. That sugar in her brain just hit her brain quick.
Menthol hit my brain.
Well, how about if we took it one step farther? Let's say multifamily. It's always easy to use your own personal experience. My mom lives in a wonderful community called Savannah Cove over there. God bless. It's there, right? It's a, uh, income reduced for people.
Fifty five and older.
Right, it's got a clubhouse. But that clubhouse is no different than any other built right there. So, it's not safer than anyone, any place else other than the apartments, right? It doesn't have hurricane windows. It doesn't have any facilities. Shouldn't new development that is multifamily provide a shelter space that is built to a higher standard? Three feet above and to the higher wind load?
Doesn't three point three point ten kind of address that? If our new development, redevelopment and infrastructure.
So, yeah, I mean.
Well, that's an overall site plan.
What, what if we took language like that is what I'm saying, in a way where we could tape that, edit it so that you're getting what you say? As far as.
And, and I could be way too far down the road. This is building code. But it's also just a base acknowledgement that, hey, we've got stuff coming at us. Let's acknowledge it. Let's address it straightforward. There's gonna be some apartments and multifamilies built. Let's give them a space within their community that is safe, that if they can't take a left on Maris, they can stay at their apartment complex and be safe.
Well, and, you know, I guess the, so now, so under our new code, so anything being built in the coastal hazard area that is multifamily or townhomes, the units themselves have to be built to plus three and the next higher wind load category. So, they're just gonna be just as safe as the clubhouse at that point.
Stay in their house.
Yeah.
Or their unit.
So, and I.
What, what about that development which is not in the CHHA?
That, that might be a better, yeah, better kind of way, yeah, so, yeah, maybe.
And if I'm too far, just say so. I'm just.
No, I think, no, I think you're, I, I think, you know, onsite shelter space and, I mean, I think there is a, there's a legitimate value to that. You know.
I agree.
To that.
To address that.
To address that, yeah.
Could we maybe, cause that's kinda getting more of the regulatory side of things. So, is it better to maybe have policies talks about onsite shelters that are provided? And then say develop, you know, land development code regulations or whatnot?
It is true. We're trying to keep regulatory stuff out of this and be more to, but I think.
I think to direct us to create those regulations is probably the more appropriate comp plan.
Or, yeah, so, you know, evaluate and implement, um, more stringent development regulations for, you know, for onsite sheltering.
That's good.
Something to that effect.
Which steers it to.
Yeah.
What you're saying, the regulatory side of.
And then we'll, you know, then we, then we, cause the next thing we're gonna do, once we get this comp plan done, is guess what? We're gonna start updating all land development code regulations. So, um, we're gonna get, we'll need everybody making sure we hit all these things.
So, we're, are we at now three point four?
What is three point four point one saying? What does that say? What is that doing?
So, where there's vacant land.
Right.
Regardless of, let's say that land is, has a land use category that allows ten or fifteen units to the acre. What this is saying is that if there's a demonstrated shelter deficit for a category three or higher storm, that regardless of what your future land use map says, you have, you cannot exceed five dwelling units per acre. So, it's keeping the density down unless you have, let's see, um, so unless it's subject to a hurricane shelter impact mitigation, so there's a study in mitigation and the coastal hazard area design standards of the land development code. That's what we just adopted was the plus three and the, and the next higher wind load category.
Okay.
So.
Simplify the note, the next one, no net increase in residential density.
Oh. No net increase. So, this was. I feel like this was pulled out of.
Well, in layman's terms, what does that mean?
Would it really, so, when this was, when this was adopted originally, basically what it said was, if you wanna increase your land use map density, the way it was meant to be interpreted was if you want to, I'm in the coastal hazard area and I wanna change, I wanna change my land use designation from five units to the acre to ten units to the acre. What this meant was that you could do that, but there had to also be a net decrease, a decrease somewhere else. So, what in reality, the way that, that we were looking at this, there's a lot of land, like Pinellas County, the, I call it the old sham property, that it's over on Carlton, that area. There's all the, Pinellas County came in and they bought that huge piece of property. That all has like ten units to the acre residential land use on it. That in and of itself was a massive decrease in available density in the coastal high hazard area. So, could you, you know, could you create basically a bank and say, alright, we can, we're not, we're not, we're, we're not, we don't, if we increase five units to the acre over here to ten on this two acres of land, we're still not hitting a net increase.
Gotcha.
That was the way that it was, I, but it's, honestly, it hasn't been tracked well and I would. We also, didn't we? We had the.
We're referring it to five units the acre in CHHA no matter what.
Well, but this is, but this is talking about, but this is like, if I wanna come in.
About a net increase.
Yeah, this is like, but this, this we need, I, I wanna square this back to the changes that we just made because we basically said you can't increase density in the coastal high hazard area for, by any mechanism, whether it was future land use, conditional use, plan development. So, I need to find out where that policy landed because I think it's missing.
It's in the flu.
It's, oh, it's in the future land use element.
That's what I'm saying. I don't know if like there was even really an opportunity to do a net increase.
Right, we might be able to just get rid of this because.
Get rid of it?
Yeah, I think we can.
So, there's, so there's the total CHHA increase and there's new input to the.
Right, yeah. Yeah.
So, we can.
I would like to just get rid of this.
Okay.
And.
Attorney, you can go with that?
Put, put a note back to, because we have a similar policy in the future land use element.
Especially with live local, I'm totally fine with this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It says you can just build it anywhere.
Quite frankly, it doesn't really matter.
It doesn't.
They can just do whatever they want.
They can, yeah, okay.
Fungus densities?
That was what we were trying to create an incentive for people to transfer their development rights out of. So, thinking about, you know, vulnerable property that's, you know.
Oh.
Sitting on, you know, the Gulf of Mexico. In the long run, because of sea level rise, there's gonna be a point where it's not gonna be habitable anymore. So, what, the intent of this was, this was kinda pie in the sky. So, let's say that that, that property's got, you know, a density allowance of one unit per acre on it. Can you, you could create kind of a market of, for the purposes of density transfer, we'll allow you to count that for three or four units, that I can put somewhere outside the coastal high hazard, somebody that needs density, so, and then that property itself would go like into a conservation easement or something so that it could be redeveloped. But it's, it, you know, it was a way to try to incentivize getting, getting, you know, developed properties out of development in the long haul.
Well, let me ask this question. That's pretty good. I like that thought. Is there anything that addresses someone that has low density land that can get, that can get a tax benefit?
That's something else that I would like. I mean, I, I think that's something worth exploring. You know, is there a way to set up a local, like, conservation something that status that you put your property into with full knowledge that you can't repair it, you can't, you do, you know, if it hits a certain point that, but you get the tax break, you know, down to, so.
Should be.
That, I mean, maybe just a policy of, you know.
Reviewing it.
Yeah, you know.
Evaluating that.
Yeah, evaluate, you know, possible, you know, conservation easements, you know, to reduce, you know, waterfront tax value, and just something, I know what we're talking about. I, I think having a policy of that effect would be.
That's good.
You know, something very valuable to.
The banking, why not look at someone that wants to do something with land that they know they'll never wanna develop it because of the risk of it being underwater.
Yep. And I don't know if there's anything, I did, I did some research into that at one point in time. Is there, is there, are, are there existing state or federal regulations that would facilitate that now? That I, if I put a conservation easement on, on, the problem, I mean, usually it's more to like large tracts of land that you're trying to preserve versus, I, you know, I own, I own a waterfront house on the Gulf of Mexico. Can I put it into a conservation easement such that if it gets wiped out, I know I can't rebuild, but it's gonna reduce my taxes, you know, for the next thirty years?
Well, that's a good, that's a good way to try to address that. Maybe it's, if you look at it, then you, you categorize what is eligible. And certainly a waterfront home sitting on property and being lived in shouldn't be considered a, a.
An eligible.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Shouldn't be considered, shouldn't be eligible, unless they're gonna give up the land and give up the house and house gets torn down and it becomes, you know.
And, and maybe there, maybe it's just that, you know, maybe it needs to be a time period on it, you know. You can, you know, you can keep the, keep the single family house there for the, the later of or the earlier of, either it's destroyed or twenty years. There's gotta be an end to it so that, you know.
Something to think about to help address this climate change.
Yeah.
Issue.
I haven't seen one. I haven't particularly looked for it, but so it doesn't mean it doesn't exist. But I would look, like I said, I think home status would be something to consider as well because you don't want, you don't want them also getting that tax break.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Say, what's changed with the environment is something we should be looking at.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll explore maybe an additional policy on conservation easements for, as an incentive.
And I wouldn't, and I wouldn't be, in my opinion, restrictive of size. I mean, cause there could be areas that has one piece of land that is, it's not gonna, it's, it's flooding.
Right.
Let's leave it alone. Let's, just let them have the rights to, you know. In fact, if you look at three point, three point four point five, you could actually edit that one to kind of introduce this topic. Future land use amendments or tax incentives? Something incentives.
Yeah. We'll, we'll come up with something.
On three point four, uh, three point five, where it says established procedures for post event damage, is there some sort of policy currently in place for that, like from this storm? You know, to evaluate dwellings and, and structures and such?
Yeah, I mean, we, we have established. Yeah.
Right.
But, but, but you make a good point. It may say we, to establish, but what, what makes it a requirement that we actually do that exercise?
There must be some state.
Intergovernmental coordination. Well, frankly, I mean, it, it's mostly tied to like FEMA reimbursements.
Yeah.
So, um, I mean, I think.
I think these policies are more intended to direct some states that have.
Emergency.
More, more established emergency.
Oversight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I mean, basically, I mean, I think, yeah.
Up north, we had what, what they called CEDA and it was a state program that trickled down to the jurisdictions. It was code enforcement disaster resist, uh, response. And you got qualified in that even if you were a code official or whatever. This was a little bit extra that established procedures. And people would go from one jurisdiction to another if there were floods upstate or, you know, a problem by the shore for, for hurricanes and such. People would come downstate from upstate to fortify and enhance the personnel. So, it was a statewide program that trickled down. It was one of the, uh, the things for the local jurisdictions. Yes, right. We go on this, right, yeah.
Which, which, I mean, I think largely we have very similar, you know, trickle down here. Maybe three five one should basically say, um, ensure properly trained damage assessment teams are, you know, maintained and, or, I don't know, I'm just trying to.
I just, before you say that, determine does it exist? I'm sure the training does exist.
Yeah.
In fact, training and certification, if it does exist, then many reference, you say that. You can even reference it if it exists from the counties or other agencies.
You could just say, you know, building, you know, the building director, fire chief and other qualified city of, city of Tarpon Springs personnel shall be properly trained to, um, serve as damage assessment teams, something like that.
Well, let me ask you this on that one, because right now it, it kinda seems like it's limiting it to just internal city resources. Do we wanna consider other resources such as committees that have qualifications to be a part of that? I wouldn't just limit it to your city. They may want, you know, it's like we bring business leaders in to talk about economic growth and development. So, maybe we just add an element, an other qualified city of Tarpon Springs personnel and, and.
I'm starting, so, I was starting to think, um.
Just like we have is, right now, we are.
Or just to manage, just, you know, you know, en- ensure, uh, properly trained damage assessment teams are.
Maintained or.
Maintain, or adequate, you know, I, court, I, we'll figure it out. I think, I know what you're going for.
I'm trying to tap into.
Yeah.
The public sector, the city resident sector that may have experience in this category. And by the way, when, when I read assessment teams, they're not necessarily assessment teams that are in there that are, they're, they're also someone that says, hey, it's more, think at this level. Your, your other team members will be thinking the logistics, the corrective actions, what we have to take. So, a team consists of various levels of skills and experience. So, that's what I'm just thinking.
Yeah, it might be, you know, coordinate damage assessment teams.
When I was at the department transportation and they had a hurricane, we had a disaster relief team that we would send to the communities, but I was going and I was a district utility engineer. Was I gonna be the one that's gonna talk about the details of relocating utilities? No, but at least I had experience enough to, to provide some input.
Right.
Toward what should be done.
And I think it was the fire, fire department up north, they had a CERT team, which was Community Emergency Response Team. And they were trained by the fire officials or the code officials. And that was more for community people, not an employee of the jurisdiction.
And they're the boots on the ground that are trained and certified to take necessary steps and actions in place.
Yeah.
But then you had another level, which were like, when you see, you see the, the mayors or the, or the public works directors or the vice president, all I'm pointing out is this should consist of something that gives consideration to anyone in the city that may have, and you're not pointing to a person, but you're pointing to say, it's also open to that team being broader than.
So, how about this? Established damage assessment teams to consist of the building director, fire chief, city of, other city of Tarpon Springs personnel and other qualified residents.
There you go.
Yeah, individual.
Local, local residents or individuals, something to that effect.
Yeah, just something that, that, that lets the city know they can pull other resources in. in.
Right.
In an area that they may need some.
Right. I mean, as a matter of policy, even that is really kinda directed by Pinellas County as well, so, you know, they all share resources, then send them where they need to be when you've got 26 municipalities.
They're good at that.
Yeah, yeah, so.
So, just a thought, it's not gonna change anything today. In regards to that whole conversation, the fire chief, the fire department gets thrown around a lot, you know, they got a lot to do, of course, we have a fire department, we don't have any fires, you know what we have a lot of? Floods. But we don't have a flood department, and that's what's really going on in our city. We don't have fires.
Actually, they have, we have a.
And she's part of the fire department.
Yeah, the flood plane manager is in the flood, is in the.
Well, right, okay, now that, the, the flood plane manager is at the, is that at the county level?
No, that's a city, it's a city resident, yeah.
Is that a disaster response person that specializes in flood?
Yep.
There's, there's one person.
Well, just one person, so, so there was humor there, but it also made sense, because.
That's good, could, we should actually list that position.
Flooding brings a completely different element of risk in, of disease and waterborne hazards and all those things, and why we would assign that to our fire chief doesn't make a lick of sense, well, let's call him our fire flood chief.
They sort, she, she's actually the city's designated emergency management coordinator for all things, yeah, so not just flooding.
Well, then I guess that person really needs to be listed there.
Yeah, well, we'll, 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 we'll list the emergency man, local, you know, city emergency management coordinator, it's a new position, actually.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
I'm surprised that we don't have the city, the police department on this.
They're gonna be there whether they're listed or anyways.
We call them the other qualified city of Tarpon Springs personnel.
Yeah.
They're getting in that big rig.
Yeah.
All of their airboat and all that stuff, right?
I don't know if they would fight that.
Almost there.
Jurisdiction. Building collapse versus a, a trapped person, trapped vehicle versus any situation, this is file, this is police.
Policy three point five point four, institute long-range restoration activities, what do we mean by long range?
So, the, the, the rest of it's in the context with Pinellas County post-disaster redevelopment plan, so.
What is, they.
I mean, long range would be like what's going on down in Fort Myers right now.
Oh, okay.
Major redevelopment.
Okay, gotcha.
From, yeah.
Reestablish communication and access.
Yeah.
Utilities.
How you rebuild, you know.
The, is the, is the, is the word range, or is it institute long-term restoration, long-term? Range's kinda like, it's like the long distance.
So, yeah, maybe, you know, long-term, yeah, long-term restoration, I would say re, restoration and redevelopment.
Yeah, yep.
You know, what's interesting about three point six, I mean, everybody here knows, with evacuation, if people have pets, they don't wanna do it, they wanna stay there with their pets.
Yep, that was, I mean, this entire, uh, objective and set of policies was something that was near and dear to former mayor Alahousses', he was the one that really kinda pushed to get this into the comp plan, um, so, there it is.
Well, I wouldn't leave my dogs.
I wouldn't either.
I know I came late, but I have a time constraint, and I'm gonna have to exit myself.
Well, we're pretty well done with this, so.
Oh, okay.
We don't have anything else to move on to tonight, so.
Oh, okay.
If there's, um, just a quick update, um, so from the time we started the, the comp plan update, um, and we had some of our initial kinda population projections and stuff, the Schimberg Housing Center has, um, put out new updated population projections, and that will have a bearing on, for, to the good, really, I think, for the, for the purposes of this board, that it appears that the, like, out to the 2040 population projection numbers are quite a bit lower than what we had, were originally working with, so we're gonna continue to kind of evaluate that, and our goal would be to have that updated, um, analysis to you guys as part of the continuing review, so just so you've got it for reference, um, I think it's, cause it, it's kinda makes, makes our job a little easier if we're not trying to house 5,000, you know, households only, or new households versus, you know, a thousand or so, so.
Yeah.
Just stay tuned on that.
Excuse me, I forget your name.
It's Caroline.
Caroline, I compliment you for your communications and how you got us to reviewing the clean version rather than digging, so, that's a compliment, because it actually went a lot better.
I wonder why Caroline's always getting.
It went a lot better, so I compliment you, Caroline, you did a great.
Yeah, I tried, this is the first time she sits up front.
Yes, back there, and even downstairs, too, she was way off to the.
You, you, you handled it well, and look how, and it, and I realized it went much better.
I tried following in both, and it was impossible.
Yeah.
You know what it, you know what it. You know what it caused us to do, caused me personally to do, to actually read the clean version.
That's what we were begging everybody to do, but it just couldn't quite get everybody there, so.
Go back and read the clean version. It is, it's hard, because everything has been reorganized, so it reads better, it flows.
Lessons learned, and, thank you, thank you very much.
Nice that you're out of the corner.
Well, that's your new seat from now on.
I like being in the corner, cause the camera's not on.
All right, this was good.
This was excellent.
Thanks, guys.
Very good, thank you, thank you.
Folks, I should say, not guys, folks.